Good afternoon.
Mr. Bailey.
And what's present?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Harvard.
Here.
Dr. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Ms. McDowell. Mary Warren.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, will you do the invocation quickly?
My pleasure. Don't be rushing me.
That's what he said. That's not what I said.
Heavenly Father, please bless this meeting as we do not only the government's work, but the people's work. Bless us as we think about others and not ourselves. Bless us as we think about community. Bless us as we think about people and their well-being for the future. Amen.
At this point, though, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege to congratulate Ms. Wilson on the 21st anniversary of her 29th birthday. On Friday, at that, at this time, we wanted to...
Making it this far in life.
And we also maybe just say, sing.
Happy Birthday to you.
Oh, my God.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Teresa. Happy Birthday to you.
No, we can do that.
Haven't figured out, she likes both.
I got it.
Thank you so much. How cute. You guys, I don't know. I don't have any more words. But start at the morning full with everything that happened at City Hall this morning. This wonderful team here at City Hall was just, had my mama and my daddy here, my daughter, just, it was so nice. I appreciate it. Mayor teased me all morning long. Thank y'all so much. I appreciate it. Y'all tell me these.
Happy Birthday.
Go ahead and grab one for myself. I will do that. And all the beautiful flowers.
Thank you. And y'all can get it.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, if you want to get it. Okay, let me put it.
I mean, you want to get it.
You know, Reverend McDowell can't hold water, so I had some sits as soon as he called yesterday and says, um, you're, you know, eat those cupcakes tomorrow. And I was like, cupcakes? Okay. But he was like, this is your birthday. When I missed it, when he prayed over me.
What's going on with everything?
Can't hold water. He said them, or I heard them, some other things I won't repeat, but he was funny. I said, hmm, what's happening?
Are you on your own?
Yes. Okay.
Can I get two? Do my kisses go?
Okay, okay. That was good. Thank you. You got it, girl. You did.
You're raising your hand. I cannot with you right now.
Oh, I was the mayor. Thank you. I totally appreciate it. Thank you.
That's good. Your license?
Yeah.
You got, uh, good plans for the anniversary? Y'all gonna go?
So my birthday is actually Friday. But, um, you know. A good time will be had all year, hopefully, at different points. My, my daughter turns 21 this year, and I turn 50 this year, so we're kind of planning to do some things.
You know about the real part?
Different. Oh, that'll be the real. Exactly. Exactly. Well, are you ready to roll?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
There you are.
We're still driving the budget train here, keeping going with Water and Sewer today. And we've got a wonderful team with us from our Water and Sewer Departments, Stormwater Two, Columbia Water, for fiscal year 2024, 2025. The Water and Sewer Operating Fund and Capital Improvement Program is Missy Kaufman. Of course, our Budget Program Management and Grants Director will get us started. We shared some information in the memo that you received, uh, leading up to today. And also that memo referenced some general fund, uh, updates and discussions, information I know that, um, Dr. Wilsons and all of you need to see. So we'll get to that before we finish up today.
Good morning, and happy birthday. Always a good day to be celebrating, right?
Thank you, Missy.
No, uh, no better way than to spend your birthday, right?
Oh, yes. Love my city. It's all good.
It is all good. Well, um, thank you, Ms. Wilson and City Council. It's good to be with you again today for another budget discussion. Today, we are talking about our enterprise funds primarily, with, um, our Water and Sewer Fund as well as our Stormwater Fund, um, and then getting into, uh, both their operating and capital. And we'll also talk a little bit about some general fund revised and wrap up with our budget calendar. We're going to first talk about our Water and Sewer Operating Fund, um, for 2425. And as we've mentioned in past, the Water and Sewer Fund, um, is an enterprise fund or is a business-type activity of the city. So it is a little different than our general fund in terms of how things are budgeted and accounted for. But for the most part, um, lots of similarities, um, in the sense that we do have a balanced budget with presenting a budget to you. So the Water and Sewer Fund, the total budget is 202 million. Revenues coming in primarily from our water sales and sewer sales. Um, it's 1% increase over the current year budget, so it's about $2.5 million increase. Water sales are coming in at 125 million and sewer sales at 70 million. This does reflect the 5% rate decrease that was adjusted, uh, discussed with City Council , um, over the prior year. Um, it's the planned, um, five-year rate adjustment that has been programmed into our budget projections. We are prog- forecasting slightly lower than originally forecasted during the rate study reviews we would have given to City Council last year, primarily due to consumption. And consumption comes obviously from a couple of different ways. How much we all water our grass versus, and then also to, um, some industries, some larger industries that, um, are coming in a little lower than originally anticipated in our model, and so we have adjusted to accommodate for that. But the budget does still cover for those primary sources of our debt service. It does primary, it does cover our operating costs. And of course, leaves us with that important, um, debt service coverage, our debt ratio coverage, um, in terms of operations.
I can have a 5% rate adjustment and a 1% increase.
Because of the increase, the adjustments last year, when those were initially projected, forecasted a little hi- a lot higher consumption values. And so the growth that you're really seeing here is reflected based on correction of those projections for that consumption, plus the, the 1% growth that we see just in the customer base. So it's really, it's a correction, but thankfully, the, obviously, the revenues are still coming in, um, uh, scheduled. It's just that they are, the consumption rates, we've adjusted for that consumption levels. Since our ra- our ba- you know, our rates are generated in part on a base rate, and then the other part of it is on a, um, based on consumption.
Is this a good?
We're not, we're not projecting, we're, we're going down on the consumption.
We're coming lower than estimated. I, I wouldn't say we're coming lower than.
Is this a good time for Clint to address some of those big customers that we just might be on?
I know, I know Clint's got his own math system.
Well.
I know the clips and I mean, where'd you?
Mr. Paul used to call it Clemson Math. Yes, sir. You're right.
We also have some big customers who may have thought they were.
We do.
Or let us believe that they are still going to do more than what they're doing.
So a couple of things, as we looked at the rate model, um, the, um, it's 70 some odd degrees in mid-May, and, and it's been raining for a couple of days. We've had a fairly wet spring. It's been fairly wet this calendar year. We just haven't seen the irrigation demands. And so that's a, a portion of this reduced revenue. As we looked at things, um, toward the end of the calendar year, we weren't too far off of projections. It's been wetter this year. Every year is not wet, but some years are, and we want to be conservative as we, as we model. The other piece, as we looked at the model to see, okay, where did we, where did we miss it? We called out two of the larger, um, industrial users. Juicy, Juicy being one. We had been told that by this time, um, Juicy would be Phase One, operating fully and, and working toward Phase Two of an expansion, and they'd be generating around $4 million a year in revenue. We had modeled about $2 million a year in revenue, just to be a little more conservative. This past year, we generated $400,000 in revenue from Juicy.
A long way from 4 million.
A long way. A long way. And even from, even from two, we modeled.
Right.
So Mark Anthony Brewing is the next really large customer. As, as we were working with them early on, they wanted 3 million gallons a day of water and 2 million gallons a day of sewer, and we had the capacity for them. That was part of the recruitment process. That would have generated, our sample bill, I looked it up, $12 million a year, a million-dollar a month customer. We budgeted for them to ratchet up to about, about $6 million in revenue. This, at the rate where they're ramping up now, they're using about 800,000 gallons of water a day, not 3 million. And, um, that projects out to about 3.5 million dollars in revenue.
Not as popular as it used to.
So. They tell us they're continuing to ramp up because they've got some other business lines to the other products, but, um...
I, I had heard from somebody that they were recruiting some other contracting business because, uh, seltzer business is kind of...
Seems to have leveled off.
Leveled off. And we've seen an increase in, um, the tea and the, uh, hard lemonade, and then the, um, White Claw is, is giving away to Highland.
So, so rather than, rather than perpetuate those errors over time and to try to be conservative, we just took an adjustment in the model and, and for this year, stepped those revenues down, and then we're continuing to see growth in the system. About a 1.5% growth when I look at our meter sales, between 1.5 and 2%. So fairly robust. We model at 1%. And we project that out, and we still, based on where our expenses are, you know, the good thing is, when it's wet and cool, we don't get as much revenue, but we also don't burn as much power or use as much chemical to produce water. Also, when it's wet, we treat more wastewater because of infiltration and inflow, so your M cost go up a little bit.
What's the cost versus sales? What's the cost percentage to produce? When you add power, chemical, labor, does it cost us?
What's it cost us per gallon?
We know that.
It's not in my head. I, um, gosh, Frank. Transmittal, obviously.
I love to know that number sometime.
Okay. It's, it's in the, it's in the transmittal letter for the canal and, and Lake Murray plants that are just our production cost. But, um, so anyway, I, I feel like those factors, as we, as we really dove in and, and tried to figure out, we had a pretty good year with interest earnings. Jeff's telling us, don't plan on that. You don't know what that, where that's going to go. Our, Tiffany has done, and the team have done a great job in, in cutoffs and kind of recalibrating our customer expectations from COVID. And so we did a good job generating late fees this year, and, and I think folks are starting to understand that and pay their bills a little more on time. But those are some of the big things that we saw, Councilman, why you see a 1% increase and a 5% rate increase. Well, you know, how, how could that balance be? That's, that's what's happening.
The meter, is that meter sales are pretty steady?
We are dropping, we are dropping meters. That's the 1.5 to 2% system growth we're seeing. And we, you never know, but, but subdivision approvals out toward Blythewood and, and the Northeast are, looks pretty robust, so.
It's fair to say that our residential fees and our smaller business fees for water service aren't having to account for any loss from the missed expectations from the large.
We just, we just pulled everything down. Yes, sir. The residential's not supporting that. We just, we're trying to right-size the model and hope that those do continue to increase. And, um, we plugged Scout in, um, but we didn't plug them in anywhere close to what they said they were going to be using. So we've also been conservative there. Lesson learned here, and...
Well, does this let us realize that we can go and recruit more economic development?
It absolutely does, and particularly with Juicy. With Phase Two, they were going to be a 1.9 million gallon a day water user. They're not using anywhere close to that, and I don't see them expanding to that. White Claw, I'd like to have a little bit of buffer for them to be, because you just, that market, you don't know what that next big product might be, and that's kind of cyclical. You mentioned the Highland. It's what's the, the flavor of the day almost, right?
I think they built that plant, you know, that they had the flexibility. I mean, they can do 80 million cases a year out of there at full capacity.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, even if they picked up the canning for somebody or, or, you know, then maybe they start making mom water there.
Will we let Department Commerce and, and County know what our, what we can provide now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we're, um, as, as Jeff Rubel and the team bring things to us for Pineview, we're more likely to, to be able to say yes to that next one, um, because of what we're seeing. And again, withholding a little reserve for, for Mark Anthony, but Juicy, we don't see them hitting those.
Will you share that with the county?
We, we have, um, and, you know, it's, I think it's usually these prospects come in and ask for the really high numbers, and that's the reason we didn't estimate it, you know, $4 million. We estimated $2 million, but now I'm having to revise them even lower because I just don't, I'm just a little disappointed we haven't seen that usage, so. But we want to model, be as correct as we can, as we model going forward, and then hopefully have better results than, than what we've got. The great thing is still being able to fund a $93 million capital improvement program, still being able to meet our debt service coverage, you know, do those things without having to adjust our programmatic approach to rates, too. So I think that's the one positive value. I don't mean to still get done to miss it, so. I will stop talking unless y'all have any other questions about the model.
Thank you, girl. I just have an extra question.
Okay. So moving on, with the expenditure side, of course, that's the 2,000, $202 million operating budget as well. So about 1.8 million increase over the current year in terms of departments. But we broke that out by, um, the operating departments. We also have, um, the debt service as well as transfers. Departments budgets make up 119 million. Of course, in the, um, utility budget would be, um, utilities, engineering, public works, customer service, um, some other, uh, services that support the utility operations are included in there as well. The, um, two of the, two of the biggest costs of the operating side of the, um, budget is the cost for chemicals and the cost for electricity.
Which hopefully, future, the future will allow us to reduce that energy cost to, to barely nothing. We get the hydro plant and the solar on, um, and just even selling it back to the power company, it avoided costs, we would say, close to that.
And that's not baked into the moderator? So that's some extra benefit now.
What's, what's the timeframe on, on that?
Well, he's, he's got RFP out now.
For the hydro and the solar?
Well, hydro we can't because we got to wait for the, we got to start the dam, I mean, the canal first, but we're going to go after the hydro money.
So we're probably realistically three years out from generating hydropower. And then the, um, the, the neat thing about, and you'll see it in our proposed CIP, is the 2 megawatt solar farm at Metro, um, right adjacent to the wastewater plant. The, um, we've got this climate pollution reduction grant, and, um, that's going to help pay, we hope, for a portion of that facility and working with the COG, um, on the implementation dollars, and also, um, being able to take advantage of some of the direct pay Inflation Reduction Act credit. That reduces that cost, and you've heard us talk about a solar farm out there for a while. The, it hit, when you put it on paper, it just hasn't been financially viable because you've got to elevate the panels out of the flood zone. When you fact, layering the grant dollars and, um, potential, um, direct payback from the, our Inflation Reduction Act, it looks real good on paper. So depending on when we get the implementation grant, and I say when, not if, because I really, I believe that's going to happen, um, we'll be able to go out for an RFP and do a, a public-private partnership to build that. So that's probably in a year and a half, two-year operating window.
Yeah. Well, what I see us doing is starting that project so that we can take advantage of, because there's certain criteria around getting started, but going ahead, we're going to do it and take advantage of this grant out there. We might as well do our parking garage roofs and everything else. Let's just go ahead and do the gamut, um, because by putting an apprenticeship program in with it, we'll get 60% back. The sewer plant, because of where it was located, is a USDA specified. That allows us to get the full 70% back.
What's your return on investment? How many, what's the payback?
So it was 25 years before we have the grant money and the others, so.
25 is no good.
No, sir. As soon as we hadn't done it. So now we're, we're driving that down to the 10 to 12-year payback, I think, and maybe better. If we can get those percentages up, it's, it gets even better than that.
When all you do is turn in the paperwork and you get 6% back, you do any of the things and add the factors to it, you can get up to 70%.
Is there any way just to keep in consideration as we move towards saving on our electric bill for our big energy hog facilities? The destination for where those savings can go? Capital improvements, changing out water lines, just catching up on infrastructure?
You can just put them back into those funds.
Right, but, you know.
Yes, sir.
Lessening burden on any increase.
Indirectly lowering those operating costs really, really help us to have a better, we perform better each year. That allows us, Jeff, put more money in, into the capital improvement program or, or borrow less money, which reduces our overall operating costs. So it's, we could certainly look at allocating if we need to, you know, for, you know, okay, we'll segment these improvements off. One of the things that we did commit to with the, the solar farm at Metro that helps make us very attractive, we committed, uh, for, for the grant money, we committed that we would take 15% of the financial benefit and put into our customer assistance program, which goes to help pay water and sewer bills.
Man, if we tie in, if we tie in the gas that we create out there in it, and we take the intermittency out of thing, then you got a solid.
Excuse me.
Solid.
Thank you.
Power source.
You start developing that energy plant that you've talked about for years, Mayor. I mean, and, and, and we are working very hard on getting that RFP on the street for biogas, reclaiming that, cleaning that gas, putting it in the pipeline and getting some financial benefit from that, too, so.
If, if this could help us get to those projects, the priority heat map projects, you know, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Also helps us with the EPA.
So again, the, the operating budget, of course, supports the entire utilities, which is, uh, two, two water treatment plants, a wastewater treatment plant, plus the distribution and collection of our, of our, of our water system. Just another look at the operating budget side with our debt service is 53.2 million. Of course, that, that debt service is covering, um, issues of prior debt for capital improvement program. Transfers out totaled 25 million. That is a, um, about 1.5 million or 6% increase over the current year. Included in that transfer out is the cash-funded portion of the capital improvement program, uh, generated out of this year's operating budget, so it's about 14 million. And then the indirect cost transfer of the general fund is 7.2 million. It's an increase of about 2.4, and that is for the addition of the, um, 400 Laurel Street property for, um, law enforcement and judicial center. And then we also have internal service funds at 3.9, reflects a little bit of increase. Those are the costs for other internal service functions such as procurement, risk management, um, and, uh, other, which would include, um, claims and so forth. Of course, the, uh, utilities is the largest budget next to debt service. Moving on with the Stormwater proposed operating budget, Stormwater has primarily one source of revenue, and that would be the, um, Stormwater Service Charge or the Earned Residential Unit, ERUs. It does reflect an increase of 5% in the proposed revenue streams for this year's proposed budget. This is the fifth and final year of this program. It was started in 2017, but was suspended a couple of years, um, during, um, some catch-up period, and then, of course, during the COVID, um, pandemic years. So this will be the fifth and final year. That, that 5% increase helps to contribute towards a 95, at the time it was proposed, is a 95 million capital improvement program, um, that's been funded over several years. Moving, um, I should say, too, the, but the proposed budget for the Stormwater Fund is 19 million. The expenditure side of the Stormwater Fund includes those functions and activities that help support these, uh, Stormwater utility and functions primarily would be our engineering department and public works who performs maintenance and service functions. The budget for, um, public works does include a $700,000, reflects a $700,000 increase. Part of that increase is for the purchase of an additional suite sweeper and a position that will be used towards the median program, um, that is being promoted in terms of helping to do the street sweeping as well as the median perform, um, maintenance.
Awesome. We'll talk about position manager, management just briefly later, but that would be one of those that we move forward with. We have the equipment in place. The program is obviously a part of the priorities with the beautification program, so.
Maintenance, yeah. Stormwater maintenance.
And so the debt service is budgeted 2.4 million. That's, again, based on the, uh, just the ongoing debt service schedule for that function. We've budgeted at a, a reserve, a higher than normal reserve this year. That reserve will help fund some future capital projects as we're coming on board, especially now that we're at the fifth and final year of this rate, help to build up that cash that we need for some other projects that are coming down the bank. We'll go over CIP here in a moment as well. And then, um, and then, of course, the, this budget does reflect, uh, 4 million towards the, this year's capital improvement program. And, and the direct cost transfer for the general fund. Next, we'll go into the capital improvement program. The water and sewer combined, uh, capital improvement program is 93 million, and Stormwater's is 4 million.
Is there, is there a list of new capital improvement projects that are starting in the design phase this year?
Yes, so we include in your packet a copy of Year One, uh, which is referred to as Year One for the capital pro- program. That was in the materials that went to you on Friday. Clint is also going to speak to some projects, um, more specifically here in a moment. So overall, the, um, drinking water portion of the capital improvement program is 30 million, with the largest portion of that being towards, uh, capital projects related to water quality, um, activities. And then next is the, um, sewer, um, the system expansion, not sewer expansion, the system expansion. And just a little, uh, graphic of some of the, uh, highlighting some of the different cap, uh, capital improvement projects around the city. And then, um, not expecting everyone to read that little snapshot, but there is that list of capital projects for Year One or, or fiscal year 2425 that was included in your materials for today.
Can we possibly get another copy? I keep, my eyes can't.
There's a copy in your memo that was attached. It might be, it might be on the back of the materials, or if not, if you don't have a hard copy of it, we can print one for you.
That's slightly better.
That one may not be it. There may be another version in the, we can make you sure you have a copy of the, of the memo that was sent out Friday.
Where'd that come from? Erica?
It would have been attached to the agenda.
I couldn't read that.
But, uh, either way, we will provide a larger, another copy.
It might be my size.
No, it's not. It's not your glasses.
We will have copies for you in a moment.
So the, and then the wastewater, um, projects included are totals of 63 million. Of course, that would be the largest portion of our, of our water and sewer CIP, um, with 46% of that being towards system rehabilitation and 33% for system capacity. We also have a lar- another list of that one. Does that one help? Ms. Harvard?
Clint, can you maybe give some more detail when you're talking about system capacity? The last time I checked, we weren't at the capacity at all.
Yes, sir.
We got opportunity to do, what, 80 million gallons a day? And we were at somewhere south of 60.
So we're, right now, in terms of wastewater capacity, we're rated permitted capacity of 60 million gallon a day for the treatment facility. We're averaging about 34. So we've got some room there. When we talk about capacity projects, though, Mayor, those would be projects where a particular segment of pipe is under capacity and needs to be expanded so that that water shed, sewer shed, doesn't go into moratorium or, or cause overflows. So a lot of the capacity projects that we talk about for wastewater or the conveyance capacity, the capacity projects that we'll talk about for water, it's kind of moving water around our distribution system to where the growth is. So you'll see a Longwood Road project, that's a capacity-driven project, just to serve the demand. the demand that's occurring out there. We're really, in really good shape at our water treatment plants and our wastewater treatment plant for capacity, so.
So can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
For the public, as we move forward in these discussions and we're putting out all this stuff for the public, let's make a note that that's what the system capacity is, because I think that will bring some relief to some folks, too, especially the folks who are calculating, watching our overflows and everything else.
Yes, sir.
And they're not seeing that we're trying to expand the plant, we're actually trying to address the issues at hand.
Absolutely. We'll, we can definitely make it clear, you know, we've got the ample capacity of the treatment facilities.
Yeah.
Getting the water where it needs to go and then collecting the waste. Dana's got some eight and a half by elevens? Oh, they found, okay, all right. So you should have eight and a half by elevens of the CIP.
You said, you have them, Dana?
They're, they're in there, she had, she found, it's the same version. Next, we have.
Do you have questions on any of those previous? I know there was, the water thing.
The ones on the capital improvement program? The ones that the projects that are completed, they.
Free water.
You on wastewater?
No, I'm looking at the blue.
That, that was an episode of my part. The, the ones that are blank, those are actually future year projects, so they show, their, their budgets show on some future years, so it's not that they're completed or not being done or deferred, they're just future year projects on the full five-year CIP.
Can we populate that in the future with, like, what year?
Yeah, we can get, we can get five-year CIP.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody have any other questions on drinking water? Not with wastewater. I did have a question around, I mean, I feel like we've been putting a lot of money in Crane Creek. When does that stop?
That's another one that comes in.
Every time I hear Crane Creek, I cringe. Nineteen point five. Probably got a hundred million now.
That's fine, that's fine. So nineteen point five million dollars for Crane Creek oh-one sub-basin sanitary sewer evaluation study. That's, that is one of the basins that we've identified as in need, and really, all of our sewer sub-basins, we've been strategically going through and rehabilitating. That's one where we believe we're getting significant infiltration and inflow. It's a large sub-basin, it becomes a large rehab project, but that one is specifically identified in our supplemental infrastructure rehabilitation report that EPA's approved, and it has a timeline to be completed. And so it's a consent decree-driven investment. I asked that same question, like nineteen and a half million, it's a really big basin, a lot of pipes, a sub-basin, and it's, we estimate there are a lot of defects in that basin, so it needs to be tightened up.
What neighborhoods are surrounded?
It's, it's right outside the city, right above Twong, and I'm drawing a blank, of Monticello Road, those areas, and I've been to some community meetings looking before it, and, you know, great folks, it's just that there, there are some issues there with their collection system. It's outside city. I think all of it is, I. Well, it, I mean, that, that contrib, that flow contribution does go toward the Crane Creek collection area, which is where Scout Motors is.
This is all consent, this is decree driven.
Absolutely consent decree driven, so.
What percentage of decree-driven projects are in the city that are, that are taking up our, our billfold?
So I have that information, I don't have that in my head. I do know that we've invested about five hundred million dollars in consent decree-driven projects.
And overall?
Overall, and we've got about.
About seven hundred and fifty total, right? When originally?
Originally, seven hundred and fifty, we.
Now, it's what, nine hundred?
It's nine hundred to nine fifty in that range, so we're over halfway there. We've got, we've got them programmed out with this ninety-three million dollar per year plan to check the boxes and get done.
Fifty, you had to guess, I mean, is it fifty-fifty?
No, sir, I think a lot of our big capacity upgrades have been Lake Catherine, Rock, East Rocky Branch Phase One, which serves USC downtown corridor, which is a nineteen and a half million dollar on this year, coming year CIP. We just completed East Rocky Branch Phase Two, which was seventeen and change, I think, in that ballpark, inside city. So we, it's, two-thirds customers are outside the city, probably half the investment's been inside city, half outside. It all flows through the city to get to Metro.
And the anticipated year that we will finish with the ninety-three million dollar review?
So that program is out for four more years, but of course, we're not done. We'll have, we'll be right on target, and then we'll have a few more years of investment to unwind the consent decree. Right now, the supplemental infrastructure projects give us seven years to complete those.
They dictate what projects we do.
They dictate how we evaluate our system, which then make, generates the project list, and when they approve the project list, they set a timeline for every single one of them, and then we have to do them, so, yes, sir.
Were you accurate about the ninety-three million, the entire, the year one CIP, or specifically about Crane Creek or the consent decree?
Well, I know we were budgeting ninety-three million.
For the year.
Yeah, for the year, and that's for the next four years.
Next four years, right. Okay, next we'll move to the stormwater capital improvement program, which is four million dollars for this year, as previously mentioned. Of course, those are all projects within city limits, as our stormwater utility is just within the city limits. Clint will speak on specific projects moving forward, or after, after this part.
System inventory data collection, what is that?
One point five million.
That's the section that we'll be completing our condition and assessment, so we've been doing within the city limits, we're about eighty-five percent, so that's going to help us complete that. And one of our projects this year on the large diameter, we actually were able to determine that we have a separation of joints. I don't know if y'all remember the Cherokee and Washington, huge blowout last summer. We're trying to avoid that by getting more proactive in these larger pipes.
Is this doing that?
It's out.
So we have that, we have not gone out to bid yet on that one, that's upcoming work. Oh, for the Washington, which?
No, for, for that.
System inventory.
I'm sorry, that's Woolpert, Woolpert's helping us, that's part of their program management.
No wonder it calls so much.
Didn't we do system inventory on drinking water as well?
Yes, sir, we've been doing inventory and mapping of drinking water, and we really started in the wastewater collection system, and that was consent decree-driven, but it's all this asset management program.
Yeah.
And, and being strategic in where we spend the dollars going forward, fixing the pipes that, that need to be fixed.
Are we done with inventory in drinking water?
We're finished in wastewater, we're not finished in drinking water yet.
How long do you think of that?
Probably another three years. We've been surveying valves and improving our mapping, it's, we've got twenty-five-hundred miles of water line in the ground. It's ma, it's such a massive undertaking to, to get all that correctly mapped, so, but we're, we've got a really good, we're in a pretty good place with it, and we, we have a very good feel for where our older things are.
Clint, I'm sorry, which one have we finished?
Wastewater, yes, ma'am. We have intimate detail about every stick of wastewater pipe in the ground. We can tell you more than you would ever want to know about that particular piece of pipe, every stick of it, so it's, it's a good thing, it's what utilities should do.
That will wrap up the water and sewer fund and our stormwater fund, our operating fund and capital improvement program for my portion. Clint may have something left to say after this?
Just look at it and see if you don't have questions, but.
Clint, if we took out Juicy and Mark Anthony, what, what would your number have been for the consumption side?
We would have been short another four million dollars.
Now, if we, if we said that, take out their decrease, what was your, if you just took them out, like, what were our growth as then?
So, no, it was, we saw three and a half to, I know, two and a half, and another one. So we'd, we have gotten four million dollars more, and we'd have been, we still would have been down a little bit off the model because of the.
So more like an inch or a half percent, two percent?
I think it probably would have been closer.
In terms of growth?
Three percent.
Okay.
In terms of growth and the revenues, right?
Yeah.
They were about half of the difference in, of the miss was the large.
Half of the, yeah.
Quite on three percent.
It was, it's been a, a good exercise.
Yeah, I think.
It was good information and, and.
We are more accurate than we were, so. Can I share just a few comments about some projects, I wanted to highlight just a couple? Erica's going to pull up another file for us. So y'all have already asked great questions, and, and so we've covered some of the things that, that we were going to talk about, but I did want to feature a couple of projects as we drill down into the CIP. She talked about the, the values, thirty million dollars for water, sixty-three million for wastewater, four million for stormwater. I want to mention Rosewood, because that's very active construction here in the city. Cotton Town is also happening, and, and so you, you'll see a lot going on. We talk to those customers quite often. Phase one is about thirty percent complete for Rosewood. Phase two is designed and funded, and will be moving to construction. We'll probably start some installation this fall for phase two. Phase three is ninety percent designed. We don't have it slated to move to construction until probably summer of 2026. The next slide will, will give you a little bit of an idea of why. So the, one of the projects I wanted to highlight was North Truman Road Water Main Upgrade from Decker to Forest. We've had a lot of breaks along that main, and in coordination with DOT's pavement list, Dana and the team discovered that they're going to be paving that road fairly soon. If we can go ahead and get our water line in, they'll let us do a longitudinal cut, and we don't have to pay for the pavement, and it'll save us a couple million dollars. So we're, we're advancing the design of that project.
Organized effort? Are you kidding me?
Crazy, that's crazy. Really doing, but.
Try to work on that one.
So, so we.
I can call on every one of those leaks.
Yes, sir. The, so we're also upsizing that main, and it, the, the benefit is that improves our connectivity to Fort Jackson and our reliability to Fort Jackson as well. So we think it's a, it's a really nice improvement and was worth kind of shifting some priorities around, take advantage of that. We're doing that a few other areas on much smaller projects as well on, on the list, but there's some filter work at the treatment plants, our, our filters are just getting older, and we've got to, we've got to do that. I'd, I'd be remiss if we were talking about the water CIP, if I didn't mention the, the four-letter PFAS in our rate model, in our CIP, and all the projections that we've got, we don't have any dollars plugged in for that treatment. We don't know exactly what that number is yet, we're studying that, we've got someone engaged in helping us look at that, but, and we talked in executive session about what we're trying to do to, to make sure our customers don't have to pay for that, but, so none of that cost is included, because our list and our numbers would look substantially different if that were, so anyway, just want to be transparent about that, in case you were wondering. So wastewater, I want to give you a quick update about Scout Motors. If you remember, we had a couple of conveyance projects and a big storage tank project. Those projects had already been conceptualized, we needed them to serve the growth in the Northeast. We accelerated those projects, and we got thirty-five million dollars from Department of Commerce to accelerate those projects. We got a ten million dollar state ARPA, they call it a skip grant, to accelerate, so forty-five million dollars going into helping us invest. You will see, in June, you will see a project for the Crane Creek Storage and Pump Station come, and that's going to be the biggest capital project that we've, we've had, is sixty-nine million dollars. But that project, we, we can serve Scout without it initially, as they go to phase two, and to support any growth that's happening in the area, we've got to have it, and it's something we had programmed in our CIP anyway, so this will help us.
Do you think Scout will provide how much gallons?
So they were about a half a million gallon a day initially, and then phase two was going to double that, so about a million gallon a day customers.
And all that half?
I have in the projections. I don't even have phase two in the projections at all, and I cut phase one in half, and I pushed it out another year, so I just, we're trying to, anyway, make sure we don't overestimate, so. Those projects are really going well, and we've gotten the conveyance projects, we got really good bids.
Do you have a way, it's still a valuable customer regardless?
Oh, yes, sir, absolutely, absolutely.
So is it fair to say that we, we had, we're doing a major capital improvement project using, leveraging state and other funds?
Absolutely. We've been able to advance.
We're going to have to do it.
We're going to have to do it anyway, yes, sir, yes, sir. So it's, it's a pretty big success story for us, and, and we're going to, we're going to see water growth in that area, like, e, e, even in the parts that aren't our sewer customers, we're going to see water growth, we're projecting or hoping that we'll see that, so. I wanted to mention East Rocky Branch, we talked about that, that's serving USC downtown Five Points, really, really important project, that we get that phase one done, and we already talked about Crane Creek, our little two million, two megawatt solar farm is on here as well, we're budgeting some money for that, hoping we can drive that investment down actually through the grants and the Inflation Reduction Act direct pay.
What's that Olympia study?
So that's an SSES work, so that's rehabilitation work in Olympia that we need to do as well, as a part of that supplemental infrastructure, smaller diameter pipe, rehabilitation of those pipes.
Is that for the study, is that for the actual work, that one, too?
So let's see, Olympia SSES, so SSES study, that's interesting. I think that's the, actually, one point two, Megan, I think that's doing some repairs.
Okay, so we're going to start doing repairs in Olympia?
Finally, yes, sir, we're going to start doing some repairs in Olympia, so. Any other questions?
That's another page that we're getting ahead of.
Oh, thank you, Dana. That's another DOT corner.
Courtney with DOT, go ahead.
So we're doing the area where they're going to be paving, and I can't remember those street names, I've forgotten that, but anyway, I don't mean to put you on the spot, so, just trying to get ahead of that paving program where we can, so.
Does that come up for you all in the coordinated meetings that we're now having with the staff at DOT?
We talk about, they share their list, and then we talk about, okay, this is in your three-year program, what's coming up, what's more near term, and so we meet with DOT once every two months, and Robert Anderson helps us coordinate that, and so we got a room full of DOT folks and city folks and talking about you, every issue you can imagine that we have with DOT. That's, that's really produced a lot of fruit, I think, been a good thing.
Do you have a map of that Olympia paving you could share?
So Dana's going to talk really quickly about stormwaters, projects, and she's going to highlight a project that you're going to see next Tuesday on Council Agenda.
Thanks, Clint. I know y'all all have been waiting for what our results are for Rocky Branch, the exciting urban branch through our city. We have had multiple reviews of projects throughout this corridor, and we have consolidated into two very highly dangerous flash flooding areas we feel are very important to highlight. So it is a saluted bypass and maxi-greg detention, as well as Whaley and Main Street upgrades. So I'll talk about saluted bypass first. Working with our consultant, we have discovered that if we put in two large box culverts of around thirteen feet by ten feet wide, square, excuse me, we will, we would start that installation around, on Harden Street, just north of the Divine and Harden intersection, come down Santee, cross over Blossom, turn west on Wacama, and come to the property that the city owns right at Rocky Branch. That project, as well as the Whaley and Main Street upgrade, that's where we have to routinely close that intersection off, students sometimes get stranded, a big public safety issue. That intersection, we are contemplating raising a couple of feet and putting in two new ten by ten culvert, box culverts, as well as we'll be putting in an eight by eight culvert under the railroad, and that will be a supplemental culvert. This project is a six million dollar consulting fee, and that. This project is a six million dollar consulting fee and that is because of the complexity of geotechnical work that needs to be done, FEMA, wetlands. We even have a landscape architect to help us with Maxie Greg because as we open up the flow from Five Points, we will be opening Maxie Greg for detention. I know that's been something the mayor has really been pushing.
I can't believe it. I'm on a lottery ticket today.
So, we're going to try to continue to maintain the integrity of the park so we have that landscape component as well. But that will be on the agenda for this coming Tuesday for y'all to review. But this is very exciting for us, definitely something a long time coming. In addition, y'all have seen this, but I wanted to highlight really quickly, we have the project for Belvedere. We've gotten a lot of complaints and during our condition assessment, we identified a lot of areas that needed to be addressed. So, we are engaging a consultant to come in and kind of look at the watershed as a whole.
Who does all that for us, Dana?
We have ten consultants that we had at RFQ. We're, I think we're coming up right now on putting a new one out to, for solicitation, but we did that about, right after we had the, um, the bond, we went ahead and put those out. So, um, what's that? Oh, shoot, sorry. Okay, yeah, that's more like it. All right, stormwater. So, yes, we have Belvedere. We also have the Smith Branch. I mentioned the very large culverts that we want to get ahead of before it fails. That was identified during our condition assessment. We also have Louisa Street, which is in El Mi area and we are doing wetlands and detention in that as well. Ongoing projects, Shandon, we are pretty much done with the West Watershed, which is the Maple and Monroe and a big pinch point. We are in easement acquisition. We've got about one more left, so we expect to hopefully be getting that out for bid within the six, next six months. We also.
Not heard from any of those neighbors in.
Surprisingly, yes, sir. Yeah. Queen Street, we're also working on easement acquisition. Also, right now, we have Yorkshire Construction for Sewer and Storm. That was a project that began back in the fall. We're about thirty percent complete there. And we also, let me just make sure I hit everything, Granby kicked off, we're working on that and Penn Branch is nearing completion for a stream restoration project. With that, any questions?
Can we go back to the?
Yes, sir.
The Five Points? What's, no, the six million is for design?
For design, yes.
Only design?
And that, that includes. And construction is all the way from start to finish, cradle to grave.
Doing, doing, doing the work.
No, not construction. Construction's estimated.
Construction management.
Right, construction management, yes, sir.
So, what, what's the timeline?
So, we expect to have construction drawings by 2027 and then we expect to be complete by 2030.
So, we're, we're digging up stuff that DOT is about to do?
So, we will be coordinating with them. They're not, they're, they are working on Harden Street. I don't know how much work they're doing on Santee, but we will be discussing with them and our coordination.
Run, run that timeframe back again.
So, we will, we expect to have construction plans done by 2027.
Two and a half years?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because we have a lot of, we have railroad permitting, we have wetlands, geotech, FEMA and.
Is there not a way to phase it so that you could start where you know you can get something of impact done earlier than trying to do it like that? That just seems like, oh, I mean.
I mean, we could certainly take a look at that with the consultant, yes, sir.
The six years though.
Six million years old, like a lifetime.
That's what's on Council's agenda for Tuesday.
So, the six million is.
I mean, the six million for, but it was for what?
For the consulting.
Four years and.
Yes, sir.
It was six years, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, ma'am, and that's.
Six years and six months.
Right.
And it had some, um, it had some additional years to, if needed, from my memory.
If needed, yes, ma'am. So, we're hoping to be completed by 2030.
Can you get some feedback on alternative? Going down Divine Street to.
Absolutely.
That intersection of Blossom and.
We have a lot of alternatives and I will happily present that to you, yes, sir.
I'm just thinking, you know, can you phase in and go and do the Rocky, uh, Maxie Greg where you know you can create some, take some relief off if you have the right bio retention there to help soak up and drive that? Could we start doing that? I hate to wait six years to do the whole thing. Is there ways to phase it so we can start just creating a little bit of relief?
We can absolutely start working on Maxie Greg. That's a good, good way to, to tackle it, yes, sir, absolutely.
I know the railroad.
Railroad permitting.
It's the biggest.
Railroad and the FEMA are kind of why we're trying to be conservative.
Who owns that parcel right there in between the triangle?
It's up here or over here?
No, right over here. We're looking at Whaley Railroad and Main.
This belongs to the railroad.
The whole parcel.
I, I believe that, yeah, because we've had issues with, uh, clearing in that area and we've had to go to the railroad for that.
So, can, I mean, this is where I'd like to have a deeper conversation with, with the consultants and others because there's got to be the way we could work with the railroad. This benefits them and even if you built a temporary detention in there to take some of the relief off until you get all the other, I mean, it would be another staging, I use the word staging pool, it's not the right term, so please don't quote me. But I mean, if those, some of the innovative stuff we need to talk about, I mean, it just seems like we're doing textbook engineering. Let's, can we be a little creative and hit some.
Because isn't the Assembly Railroad, couldn't that possibly take?
Yeah, this, Assembly Rail is going to be impacting on Whaley Street here, but we are lowering actually Assembly Street. Well, that was the alternative preferred.
So, I mean, if we could, if we could do a temporary phase one for Maxie Greg and then possibly what the mayor mentioned there.
We could take a look at getting it staged and we actually are consulted, we are going to be repurposing the railroad to see if they would be willing to partner with us on this particular area.
Long-term, it benefits them just as much as it benefits us.
Absolutely.
Because if we don't do something, they're going to have some integrity issues down the road as well.
Before the agenda item for Tuesday, is there a way, will you have to go back and maybe tweak the scope a bit so that there's benchmarks to, to meet something like this? Because you have to have the design for even doing these more creative.
So, then kind of stages.
And then you would be putting something out to bid in, at those benchmarks and in those specific phases or pieces done, I guess?
FBM, we'll take a look at that today.
I think it'd be really beneficial if we spend some time before we, with all these projects and really sitting down and, and talking with the engineers and stuff and, and getting them to think a little bit outside the box and also speaking them because they're pretty good at spending money, but they're not very creative.
Yeah, we, we actually have about ten projects along this whole Rocky Branch that we have been going back and forth trying to figure out. We've had a lot of property acquisition issues. We've tried to work with USC at Blat P Center, just not interested in giving us any of that land. So, it's been a challenge.
The consultants got a model of the watershed? So, it's pretty easy for them to plug in these different, and so why don't we just do a little workshop? I don't know how critical next week is if we could kind of hit the pause button.
It sounds like we definitely want, absolutely.
Maybe we could do a little workshop with those interested parties and.
I'm very interested to learn more about it, but I just think we've got to, for us to be able to address these things, I mean, you start talking about 2030 before you even.
Yes, I'll get that coordinated. Well, well, Mr. Wilson, you want me to pull that up?
Sounds like contract.
Yes, I think we probably should because I don't know if we'll get y'all time enough to get that done.
Absolutely.
I ain't in the city.
Don't say the H-word.
Not our problem.
I know what that lady said, she called me from the road and wanted to know, calls on the radio and wanted to know how they could rebuild Notre Dame faster than they, than Penny could get Orange Gravel.
Wow, wow.
I was like, well, you need to call my friends at the county.
Question. So, I just had one or two more slides to share with y'all. I've heard the mayor say on three or four different occasions how much he really, really likes Planning and Development's monthly snapshot. And, uh, so I've gotten jealous and, uh, we've tried to reformat our Columbia Water Update.
Ooh, I like this.
To some more infographics. So, it's chock full of infographic stuff and this is just one I wanted to highlight for you and explain a little bit. You'll see here combined water, wastewater and storm water plus the wastewater grants and what we've executed versus what the plan was. You can see we're at eighty-nine point three out of a total of one hundred and fifty-one. In June, when we bring that sixty-nine million dollar project forward, we'll roll over to one fifty-one and you might be scratching your head, wait a minute, how did they, how did we approve more than what was budgeted for the CIP for that year? These approvals include projects that have been funded in previous fiscal years. The construction may have been funded in a previous fiscal year and it took us a while to get the design done and get the construction going, so.
And are you showing that, as you put that together, saying X amount of funding is, is carryover from previous years?
So, we have not. We've talked about ways to try to show that. We've got a disclaimer kind of at the bottom of that first page that shows, hey, some years you're going to do more, some years less, but.
Part of the sixty-nine is part of the grant money we got.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And so, um, that's why instead of ninety-three, we're sitting on a larger number. But, so, any year, you may, you may approve more than a CIP or less than a, than an approved CIP in terms of actual projects that come for professional services or construction. But when we blended over a five-year period, we looked at, and this is just water and sewer, but we looked at, um, the, the budget CIP versus council approval of capital projects. You can see in FY nineteen twenty, we didn't execute eighty million. The next year, though, we executed a hundred and twenty-two million and only planned for forty, so a kind of a catch-up year, we did a lot more. The next year, we had a hundred and twenty million dollar CIP, we only executed forty-five million. The next year, we caught up. This year, we're back ahead. When we look at the five-year trend, we're right on. So, it's hard to look at it year to year necessarily, but when you look at the trend, we're able to process what y'all are, are allowing us to process through approving the CIP.
That information is much easier to comprehend when you see it in a visual like that.
And what, what I really like about the, looking at the five-year trend, I mean, it, procurement, OBO, our team.
Legal.
Legal. At least my, almost nine years at the city, that working relationship has never been better or more seamless. I mean, it, it, Aisha and Shannon and TK, you're, I mean, there, there's, the, the bottlenecks have been blasted through and everybody's pulling together to get the projects out. And so, it's working really well and that demonstrates that we're able to, to, to get the throughput, so that's the last.
And this will be on the website now. I think, you know, the mayor talked about that dashboard that I do monthly. This will be, not everything in the dashboard, but things like this, the planning and development piece, I think, code enforcement, it'll be on the.
I mean.
Public dashboard.
That'd be great.
Should get it up this month.
And I had to give Krista the props for what they did because you got so much information from it and, and it really is where we wanted to head, you know? Gathering and understanding, some of the other numbers are important just from a management standpoint, but this gives us a tool also to share as we're talking to constituents because people want to know where the money is. We all approved all this, where did it go?
Right.
There's work order backlog trending up, trending down, the percent reduction in there. We've got the, the call wait time statistics, there's a nice infographic for that. So, it, it's, it, the team's definitely stepped it up in terms of how we present the information.
You brought up the call. Are we, have we had some technical issues going on lately? Because I haven't gotten, lately, I've gotten a bunch of calls more than I have in a while and I was curious if it was a technology thing because our normal wait time is minimal.
Well, um, some of that was contributed to staffing. We are down seven CSRs. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. So, as I was saying, so some of it is contributed to staffing. We are down seven CSR's, our customer service reps, so that has contributed to our call wait time. We also had an issue, I'm not sure when you received some calls, some escalated calls pertaining to wait time, but we did have an issue with the billing cycle issue. I believe that was, uh, let's see, last month, I believe. But prior to that, our call wait time has still been relatively, we have escalated to, I think, six minutes back in, I believe that was April. But for the most part, we're still definitely under, you know, six minutes for our average wait time.
I did have one somewhat related question. We met with the citizen and there was a discussion about the storm water bill being mailed out and the due date being like the next day or two or three days later. So, she had her bill and she had the due date.
We wanted her money.
So, I don't, is, I don't know if that was a one-time thing or?
Well, we haven't had any issues that I've heard as far as like, um, due dates, you know, we've sent out bills way prior to when due dates are due. Sometimes we'll do have some ones and twos, we'll have customers that, you know, might get a bill and then their due date is within five days. Unfortunately, you know, due to postal services, sometimes we can't really, um, you know, dictate that, but if there's some issues where we.
Standard, like, what's the standard?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days it goes out, fifteen days it comes.
Right. And if we do get those type of customer, you know, complaints, we can put a hold on the account, give them more time to pay. So, whenever we do get those, we make sure we try to help our customers as much as possible when those things do occur, so.
I think a lot of people, uh, because I tell people that all the time, like, just, you know, work with the department, you know, they're, they're nice folks, blah, 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 blah. I think a lot of people, though, have got in their mind that that's not true, um, for whatever reason. So, so I think, I think we, we got to make sure that we're, we're telling people, you know, we're a kinder, gentler, um, group of people than, than what they've convinced themselves is really going on.
Absolutely. And we are always striving and pushing for courteous professional service among our staff. So, anytime, you know, you do have those issues, they will be addressed.
The beauty part is for all those complaints I got and anybody that I forwarded, the feedback I get back from them is this was resolved, it was great, thank you.
That's what I'm saying.
So, I don't know what happened in the beginning. All I know is that, you know, our follow-on has been very satisfactory and people are very happy, so.
People, all the same, same, same thing, I guess. So, I don't know if people have like some, you know, typical hangover from something that happened, you know, some, 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 and, and they just can't move on, so.
A lot of people are just generally unhappy they had to call customer service, right?
Yeah.
That's right. I, I guess.
Because our, I mean, you call our waters.
Like being in the drive-through.
I love calling. Go so nice on the side of the phone.
So, it's District Three people too.
And that just means, you know, we do have some self-service options, but of course there are things that we can always do to try to look into other self-service options for.
There was some like, there, is there some line that's twenty-four seven? I forwarded this email to both of you all. They were saying it was a busy signal when they tried to call a water, a water.
So, our call center is Monday through Friday, eight to six, but then after hours, after six o'clock, our calls transfer over to the answer, answering service.
Okay.
And that's for emergency only calls, so.
So, it says, um, the City of Columbia Water Hotline that is listed as twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's five four five three three zero zero?
That is, that is our customer service number.
But that's not twenty-four hours, right?
Well, so we used to, our staff used to be twenty-four hours, but now, as I was saying, the calls transfer after six to the answering service. So, it's still where someone will be live, someone will answer your call, but not necessarily our staff after hours because it's emergency only for.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours, yes, ma'am. Still same number, though, right?
Okay.
Or if it did ring busy and something may have been wrong, then we need to maybe check it out or something.
I think maybe, and I, I'd sent this to you guys, but, um, uh, they just said that they called again, no one answered and then it, they weren't, it disconnects before they're able to leave a voicemail. So, it might be our third-party service, we need to just check in and see.
I'll definitely do that.
Yeah.
And then I know we're down seven.
So, if we are fully staffed, twenty-three customer service reps on a daily basis is fully staffed, so yes, ma'am, down seven. So, yes, ma'am, down seven. We had a great turnout at our recent career fair at the Columbia Convention Center, so we are looking to make some more hires. We actually have four start yesterday, so now we still, like I said, have seven. So, we're looking to get those positions filled as well as possible.
What's the starting pay for something like that?
Starting pay is 35,396.
Is somebody poaching our talent?
I'm sorry.
Somebody poaching our talent, other utility, customer service call?
Um, I wouldn't, you know, as far as I could.
They just leave for different reasons.
Right. Some, yes, some do go to other call centers. Verizon did a big layoff last year, so we have gotten several that came from Verizon. I think they laid off several thousand in their call center last year. But other than that, there has been some that have left due to just other opportunities. Call center jobs are really becoming harder and harder to retain staff. It's just, you know, and I was just at a conference in Texas a couple of weeks ago, and a lot of the utilities were kind of having the same concerns and issues as far as just, you know, having, having staff on the phones to answer calls, and so.
Customer service jobs are harder today.
It is very hard, so, and it seems like it's.
Conversation going on.
Right. It's gotten harder since the pandemic, so we've definitely seen some trends where it's just been really tough.
I did want to put in a plug. I think we ought to do the career fair that we had more often. People liked interacting with our employees and talking to them about the jobs. The response, I mean, what I saw and the people, the interactions, I just don't know that we can do it online and others. I think we have to figure out a way to do more of this in person because, I mean, it was thriving when I was there.
It was.
I think Tanese, I think is across the hall listening, but she.
Do you hear us, Tanese?
She was, I don't know, maybe she left. But I do feel you're right, mayor, the response, and then also, our follow-up is so important. You know, people want to know that when they came that day and all that interaction was great, then we have to immediately follow up with people, and HR's been pushing them to do that.
Get on the computer, do the application, talk to the supervisor. I mean, that's what I thought was just so seamless about it. Because people, they jumped, they seized on the moment right then.
Exactly.
Hurried over here.
We have to go to the mic.
Thank you, Tiffany.
You're welcome.
It was a really, really good career fair, and we're going to get some statistics to you guys in about three weeks when we have an opportunity to determine how many people we've actually hired from those who attended. But this year, we had a record number of candidates there. There were 1,200 people who registered ahead of time, and we saw over 700 that particular day. We had over 20 different departments participate, and many of them left with, viewed on the spot. Many of them left with candidates that they thought they might offer a job to. To date, there are nine that we know of who have been offered jobs on that, from that particular event. To give you some more data, once we.
I know, I know, I was talking to the folks at wastewater and one of the plants, and they've been looking to fill some positions, and these guys just walked in the door. I mean, they're like, it was a miracle.
Yeah.
Really?
We, there was a gentleman who had been in contact with us that came from Sumter, and he came in, and he obviously had just gotten off from work, and he came in, and he was in there for like 15 minutes, and he came back out, and we said, you, who'd you just speak to? Well, he said, I talked to the person that I was interested in talking to, and Sharon was like, no, we have to bring you back in to get you introduced to some other people. So, it was a really good day. We were exhausted at the end, but it was so worth it. Everybody was in such a great mood. The departments were so prepared for this event. And so, we're just, we're just hoping that the follow-up happens because that's what has to happen now. You know, we have to make sure that the candidates are followed up with and that we're not forgetting them and that we get them in the positions that they're qualified to, to be in with us.
Mayor, as you were coming over, you know, making the pitch that we need to do more of the career fairs, and it is a heavy lift to pull them off, but maybe we could get to a second one, you know, and one, maybe it's two instead of one, but we'll definitely look at that, mayor.
We have done, hiring events is what we kind of call it for particular departments when they're in dire need. But we're not there with any department right now except for police. We have a lot of vacancies in the police department, but other than that, we're, we're looking pretty good.
Well, I think with the numbers that the general shared with us on the military assignments and the increase for here, we really need to beef up how we connect with them and share with them the opportunities that are here at the city as well as in the city.
A lot of them still have a lot to give when they come out.
Yeah, they're not, they're not ready to retire. They're ready to start their service.
We have several in Columbia Water that have been, had military backgrounds, and they like working in the field and that sort of thing. I wanted to also say, mayor, that I just want to give a shout out to Tiffany and Clint. They also created quite the family atmosphere over there in customer services and customer care. You know, we were really saddened over the last, thank you, Tanese, over the last two weeks, we lost one of her Bright Stars Supervisor, Amber Patton. And I think y'all probably saw some of the coverage, and she, I told them, and Clint reiterated it, that that legacy that Amber's left, I think, also encourages many of our folks to stay and to grow in the profession and strive for some of those positions like she had. And I really appreciate how they've cared for those folks over the last couple of weeks.
It's, it's, it is an uphill battle, and I think having the right people, you know, making people feel good about their job. Customer service today, you look, I mean, that's why the restaurant industry's suffering. That's why everybody else is. It's just the way people react today, and you ought to have a temperament and a balance to deal with that.
You're right.
And it takes a lot, and so, you know, supporting them is, is a big deal.
Any more from our Columbia Water team, Missy?
We spent all the money, so.
Well, we can talk about wood stuff all day, we love it, you know? But thank y'all for being interested and so engaged, and appreciate what y'all do for us and supporting us, defending us sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we will wrap up with just a look at the general fund revised budget, and it is revised. We have adjusted property tax estimates based on some growth and other adjustments. Since our last discussion with you, so we've increased the general fund budget by 1.4 million, and we have applied that 1.4 million in two ways. One is we increased our budgeted reserve from 500,000 to a million, and we applied the other 900,000 towards a capital improvement program, funding towards capital projects. And we'll bring that forward, that list forward to you at another time with recommendations for allocations. As we mentioned to you in the last budget meeting, we have a number of items that are deferred, most of which are one-time items, or, and of course, our capital improvement program. This money will help support that in opposed to just funding it from any potential year-end savings that we may have at the end of the fiscal year. So, this will allow us to be able to address some of those items upfront. And then the last part of that conversation would be just a reminder of the remaining budget discussions. So, this week is the last, this is your last council meeting before we advertise the budget. So, this week, we will notice the budget with the local newspaper. It'll be published on Monday. That is for a budget public hearing and first reading scheduled for June the 4th. Basically, we'll be advertising what is the general fund total budget. And so, next week's discussion will continue out, additional items, having to get to our parking fund. I know you all wanted us to bring back the hospitality tax and accommodations. They are both, those committees are meeting this week, so they're working towards.
So, we'll have a chance to get it before the meeting.
They're working towards having those recommendations, provided how interviews go this week for next week's council meeting, or next week's budget workshop.
You going to start in at two or one next week?
It's. One.
Is it one or two?
We.
I know.
We'll be here at Busby.
We'll be at Busby. And Missy, did you want to mention about, I know with the committee, and there's a couple of, you know, the budget workshops, okay? There's a couple of bigger ticket items, I know, mayor, that are being contemplated, you know, city-type prominent events. And I know you had asked about some direction for the committee as they're going into those meetings next week, or did it happen this week already?
They're meeting this week, and they are being interviewed. But during the budget workshop, when we discussed special revenues, two particular items that were discussed as, I think, more signature items that the city wanted to look at. So, the question was whether or not to exclude those from the committee's review.
No, I think, I think we've got to go through the committee process.
Sure, they are, they're being interviewed by the committee.
And I think you just see where it lands. I just think it's important that we continue to follow that process and then.
What are they?
Songwriters, potential. Songwriters, Hall of Fame, and then Three Rivers Music Festival.
We're saying. Minor scales.
Right.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure.
The system, and, you know, if they give them some seed or whatever, you know, we can discuss it after, but I think it's much easier for us than to appropriate money if they've gone through the system and not outside the system.
Sure.
The way that, how I mean, we were just getting clarification as they were going through that.
Right. And then there was also a request at the time to bring back the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Convention Center with regards to their allocation for their, the tourism development fee or the local accommodations tax. So, if that's still the schedule, then we will keep them on schedule, on task for interviewing next week.
Yes.
Or not interviewing, but presenting to the city council next week.
Might be like an interview, I don't know.
Right. The hospitality tax line item agencies, so there's also, that's pending city council's review. We have not scheduled any of them to come present, they typically don't, but of course, there's an.
Do you not want them to come next week?
We can start working, making arrangements.
It'd be nice to just have all of it, so we, so as we deliberate, we've had everybody in front of us.
Let's see where all of them are in terms of schedule-wise and everything, and if that works, then you have an amount set for them. So, if not, then definitely by maybe the June 4th meeting or another schedule.
If we could do it before, that'd be great. If we can't, then June 4th, I think. I'd definitely like to have it done before we do first reading.
Are you ready to hand out some of those materials?
Yes. And then Stephanie and Tyler have extra materials for you that was requested last week. This is some of the information that was requested with regards to items, additional information about the items in the general fund budget that were additions to the budget or increases or additions to in the general fund. Also, a list of those items that were deferred or that are pending that Ms. Wilson is looking to give some additional consideration for out of that reserve before we proceed, as well as a list of requested new positions, and then also department overviews that highlights prior accomplishments as well as budget priorities. Just keep note that those, those items would have been submitted to us early in the budget process, so if there may be some references to some things that are either on the pending list or not been funded moving forward, so.
But I think that it's important for you all to see the full depth of what the department's put together. You know, you'll see, as Missy mentioned, there's, and we tried to always now go back to your strategic outcome, so you can see the things that were approved in the budget or as we're requesting it to be approved in this budget, additions or increases. You know, we get down to some really, just, it's the weeds. It's like the sausage is being made, so you can see some of the things that really impact the operations of our city on a daily basis. They tie back into the engagement that we're working on. I built infrastructure, keeping our community safe. All of these things in some shape, form, or fashion touch everything that we do and everything you all expect us to do on a daily basis. You'll see also the longer list of things deferred or pending, and of course, many of these things can be one-time allocations potentially. So, the goal is that when we bring back fund balance, and now with the approval of the reserved, budgeted reserve and the capital that we just discussed, the 1.9, I guess it is, Missy.
So, this first page, you're showing us like the.
At the top, it says, apply 24, 25 General Fund Department approved budget additions and increases. Those things are reflected in the budget already.
I am going to ask, at some point, we'd like to see some more money put in Love Your Block to really enhance the neighborhoods, but I also want to put a hook in it that these neighborhoods get involved with CCN as well.
Yeah.
So that we can really try to, and also, you know, I'd also like us to look at if we could do some type of grant or something to CCN with the hook of trying to help us get the information that we've been talking about, all the stuff that's going on. It seems, the thing is, there is a way for us to help them, help us disseminate a lot of the information that we have, everything from our dashboard to whatever, but really trying to get it out, because every time I'm going somewhere and talking to somebody, like, I didn't know about that.
I don't know.
They don't know.
Yeah.
So, for this, for the deferred and pending budget request, the one-time fee of 3.5 million? So, that's, that's, these are projects and requests that just haven't found funding in the various homes?
Correct. And then when we come back with fund balance, might be some surplus there in addition to the budgeted reserve that we just talked about. We'll work our way through some of these that maybe rise to the top.
You said that's October, when do you come back with?
It should be before October, I would hope, we'll, we'll be, maybe September.
Yeah, it, we have brought it back in October, that's usually because it had been the year before. So, we like to get close, finance likes to be a little bit closer on the completion of the audit. So, but usually the fall timeframe, so October, November timeframe for sure.
And then with positions, so position management is what you'll hear me always referring to. We kind of stayed the course, kind of held steady with positions other than things like we talked about earlier with the, it's not a street sweeper position. It was a, what was the name of that position, Missy? That was referred to earlier with public.
Equipment operator.
Equipment operator, because we've got this new equipment, so obviously, we went ahead and moved forward with that position. But you'll see the page that lists the other positions that were requested from municipal court to animal services, fire, planning position, assistant court position. These are all worthy positions. I'm just not at a point yet to pull the trigger on these. Again, we've got a reserve to look at positions as we keep going a little bit further. There's a couple others of note with parking that may become necessary with the amount of events that we're doing in the city that's not listed here, but we'll talk about parking next week. You know, I told you, we were just pumping the brakes for a minute on the rate increase with parking that will come, but we want to work a little bit more in parking services with building morale and working with our parking enforcement folks and others, really making them become the true ambassadors that they should be. I did a slight change in leadership over there and brought parking operations and facilities together under Henry's direction now. So, parking services now reports up to ACM Simons, and we're just doing some deep dive over there on, on a couple adjustments with working with our staff. In addition, I'm trying to call out some personnel-related things. It's noted already, but this is, these things are more of reclassifications or things that already happened during the previous fiscal year as we are moving forward with 400 Laurel, the law enforcement and judicial center. We have a new building maintenance engineer. That's a big part of what we're doing with getting that facility online. And that came on as part of the, when we took over, the Aflac facility actually already worked there. And so, we were able to get him to become a city employee. And then one of the other items of note, the mayor, and I've talked about this often, but with public relations, similar to what Jay is doing, her position is through the Police Department Executive Marketing and Communications, we're creating through a reclassification of PR, an executive media relations and communications manager, which you will see more attached to you all and mayor recommend. That's been very apparent to me, and particularly with what you're talking about, getting the information out, pushing the stories that Crawford has been also very instrumental. I think you'll see, we met with them now that the brand is and logo is underway. They've got some wonderful, wonderful ideas about how you create toolkits for the media. So, this notion that why is the media, as much as we're always doing, still not covering certain things, is two things, there. They're across the country, you know, they're taxed too. And sometimes it's a little bit of laziness. I'm just saying that I know we're being extreme and it's okay. We need to be able to give them the things that they need readily.
Wrapped up in a.
And, 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 and help them push it out. And so we're gonna be doing more of that. We're gonna have someone attached to you all to help us do that. You know this person already. And, um, that's underway. So soon we'll reintroduce, um, that employee in this role. Very similar with some of the things that, um, that Jay is doing. They already really work really well together. And, and, and you all work with this person really well already as well. So.
Hopefully we can use that as we, these dashboards come up as well.
Yeah.
And sharing that information. Cause I think the more, sometimes when we share it, people see it and they understand where we are and what we're doing.
Mm-hmm. That's true. So those are a couple of the positions that are really approved, so to speak. They're either reclassifications or we've approved them. Um, but the rest that you see on that list have not been approved. They've been requested. But we really are trying to still maintain our, uh, position management, holding things as steady as possible. And then of course, um, the full package shows the priorities of each of the departments, some of their accomplishments. And if y'all have any questions, once you look through that, please let me know. Um, I think that's.
Do I have any questions?
Thank you so much for your support. This is always a tedious time of the year, but been a summer for us. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.